... We don't have to do the difference.
Yes.
All right, you guys do your thing.
Thank you. So before we begin, we want to share that we will be recording tonight's meeting. We do plan to share this recording publicly in the event that a parent, staff, or community member would like to know what was discussed. If you do not wish to be recorded, please let us know at this time. Thank you.
All right, next thing on the agenda is to tell you this. You can all stand.
And back to the chair. Our president is to the right. And I'm going to say it's America. And to the right of the place is Sam. One nation, one tribe, individual, everything just. Thank you, guys.
Now to open a public hearing on the debate. The first thing.
It's the time of public speak?
No. It's a public hearing on the debate. Oh, not on the debate.
Another year. Yes. Another year with no comments on our budget. I had no emails. I had no phone calls. I had no public input from the budget. We didn't post in the newspaper, writing a note, and on our website. Yes. Never here. Nothing has changed since I presented.
All right, now press the button. All right, we have a lot more. Okay. We're going to come out of the public hearing and go into the meeting now. The meeting, and if you have any comments, let's see now. Remember, we have two minutes.
So this is recorded, right?
Yep.
Does much of it sound like that?
It's great.
Before you start, it's two minutes. Do you have to get that back on there?
It's actually three minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes? Who you guys are bringing up? Uh, so my name is Rick Slaughter, and I was here down, um, and I did. I don't, I mean, you know, when you see the the need of local country, parents are upset and yelling about masks and all that stuff. I don't, that's not my, uh, my way of handling things. I think there's a much more civil way to this convey to you guys. There's a lot of concern, parents, I'm sure, as you know, about the mask mandates. And I know that you guys are under the, um, the guidance of Governor Inslee and the Department of Health Department. I'm just urging you guys to try to find a way, because there's a lot of parents that want that medical choice. So the folks that I chat with have said, um, you know, if the parents want their kids to have a mask, love them. But for the ones that want their kids to not have them, whether they got asthma, glasses, religious reasons, whatever that may be, maybe the children have had COVID or the parents are against it for one reason or another, I feel like it's the parents, um, that they're right to have a voice. And, and so we're looking, I've got folks near and others that we're looking for the school district that gets this overturned, or at least a policy in place where they, the parents can have a choice. If you guys talk with the families and parents around this town more often than not, they're going to tell you that that's the side they agree on. So I'm, I'm hoping that that's where we can go. Um, so I'm going to be looking for that in other counties to see. And then, um, next Wednesday, if we're going to have a rally for unmasking the kids, it's happening, I, I thought there was eleven or twelve. The doc corrected me last night and said there's now over a hundred districts in Washington State alone. Um, or, or I don't know if it's districts or actual schools, but there's a hundred other rallies all happening on the eighteenth next Wednesday. They're all doing them mostly right in front of the county, uh, the building where the school district is. This isn't really set up for that, the street block. I'd rather do it, you know, down at the fountain, at the corner of Calistoga and, uh, Highway one eighty-two, right across from T-90, that fountain. So that's what we're going to be doing, but not as an angry mob, but just like concerned parents, you know? Um, we follow the science, and that's what I said, if you guys got that notice. Um, there's forty-seven independent studies that prove inefficacy of, of the masks on, in a variety of different ways. So there are the links that are in there. I urge you guys to read those reports, look at them, so you can understand where the parents are coming from. Um, because the, the children, as most of us know, are, are the least at risk. And we're just hoping that you guys can, um, take note of that. So that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll add you.
What state you name for the word?
Caroline Griffith. Um, in regards to the masking, there are other districts, I'm not sure if you're aware, that are also fighting the mandate. Uh, Solton is one of them. Um, and also O'Fellow, I don't know if you've seen their YouTube video with the president, uh, their board recently asking all the board members to reach out to different districts and find out whether districts are in support of an option for masking or not masking. Um, there's an RCW out there that states, and I don't have it exactly in front of me, that the board has the right to make the choice whether or not to mask the children or create their own policies. So I think you'll, if you can see the signs, you just kind of look around and see what's happening, and it creates, and we're one of those districts that wanted to jump on board and help support the community. It'd be fantastic if our scientists were holding up, said, um, please help support the whole school district in a fight to have masks as optional, instead of saying something opposite, and we wish our boards was fighting for us. So, uh, so we think of all of that. Hopefully, uh, see that, you know, and, uh, please do the school without masks on based on the industry. Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other speakers today? No? Okay. Okay, we move back on to the next one. I don't know what I finished.
Okay, um, I wanted to thank, um, uh, the employees of the district, the parents that, um, attended, and the community members that attended our CPAC meeting on Tuesday night. We had a tour of this older building and the neighbors department and OBS, file stopping round. And it was very important to, for people to actually see the way, the way the district is built, which is pretty piecemeal here in this area. And that people were really involved, and I, people did a great job organizing and sharing information. And it did a lot to help me to see new issues, even though I knew there were a lot of issues. And so I really wanted to thank Ed and all the staff that helped us with that, and all the parents and the community that are involved. Thank you very much, because long-term planning has been close to my heart for a long time. I thought I committed with Aaron a long time ago, and, um, and so I really was very pleased as a board member and really grateful as a community member that there's so many people involved in this. Thank you.
I don't know if anyone would want to get.
Oh, good.
Okay. On this side. Exactly.
Did you have another comment? Or did I miss a comment?
Yeah, definitely. You know, there's so much that has been happening, um, around the district. I'm so proud. Each morning when I get out to work and I see all the students coming to class for summer school, I've just been really proud. I know there's a lot of things to support, that only the kids that we normally serve throughout the summer, whether it was for credit retrieval or just catching up on their whole skill sets, so getting improved as a staff, you know, and the district as a whole to serve those students. It's been around a couple of years. Um, and we've got learning to make up, and I'm just so proud to see the kids every morning there hanging out from the picnic tables, waiting for class to start. And I've seen our teachers out there supporting them. Um, so it's one recognition that the district's effort to take care of those kids. So thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
I hope to stick on to the final, um, uh, graphic mission for our staff is the community involvement that we see recently with, um, the catch truck event, um, that was kind of up there. And the national lineout is having representation, um, from our state district at some of those events, um, where we have a panel to be even more than here. And so it's just really nice to get back out there, get the district faces out there with the communities and be involved with them.
And it's important for our community to be in our district and our district to be in our community, that we have that exchange of thought and data and connection.
I've got one recognition, I want to recognize, why she did an excellent job. Um, she just had an audit, and, I mean, it came out amazing. So you know where the money's spent, where everything is at, everything was aligned. The auditor gave her, her and Chris a compliment. Auditors don't usually give compliments. So I was very impressed with that, so that's something that she did very well. And we need to praise them, keep all the hard work they put into that. No other one here, we go on this side. This is the equity council within?
Yes. So, um, the National School Awards Association had an equity symposium this July, and I thought that the topic, um, was really, um, important, and so I elected to go to the symposium, which was online. Um, I kind of did for my own, um, just to make sure that I understood equity, I kind of looked at the dictionary. And in the dictionary, equity is a noun. It's the quality of being fair and impartial. In school districts, it goes a little bit beyond being fair and impartial, while having equal things available to all students. In school districts, in educating students, um, as Kathy has frequently said, it's really digging in now, you have to meet the kids where they're at. And so equity in schools means providing, um, avenues and resources for the kids who might not get that at home, for instance, to be able to get those things back at school and to be able to be at the same level as the kids who have all of the traditional supports. So, um, in doing that and thinking about that, um, and providing inclusive opportunities, inclusive for all of our kids. Inclusive, if you take a vacation, you know, you think all inclusive, everything's covered. And that's what we kind of want in our school, we want kids to have an inclusive experience here, includes everyone. So the first day was really spent on talking about healing. Um, after the past year and a half with COVID, that it's not being here, teachers not being here, that healing is really important. Um, a lot of time is spent on discussing why school districts spend more to ignore the mental health piece, and I know that we talked about that last year. Um, as we all worry about the students all the time anyway, that when they're isolated, um, that became more prevalent. Um, there was a lot of discussions around, you know, some roadways to get kids engaged in school, um, that would be more at the classroom level, teacher-to-student level. A lot of discussion on relationships and how important relationship building is. Um, and most of us, I think, we know that, and we have a great staff here in this whole district to really strive to make those connections with the kids and, and make sure that they know some of the ins and outs of their lives and what's going to trigger them to be really excited about math or history or, or what have you. So, um, and then, of course, there was a discussion about American, uh, rest plan act of twenty twenty-one, which is our professor funds, um, that we get, and about what the purpose of that plan was, and how we, as a board, um, can really make sure that giving equity and inclusive programs in our school is kind of, kind of all to us in order to make sure that we're supporting our district leaders, our superintendent, our teachers, the ones that are helping us with these plans, that we have funds that we can dedicate to supporting those ideas and those plans that are going to make kids successful. Um, there was a great big talk about, um, changing, tweaking a little bit of learning. Um, learning for this past year and a half, learning is incomplete. Um, we know that the students get the very best of what education offered them in the past year, so how do we, how do we take that up now? Um, and kind of changing that thought versus, um, taking it to accelerate versus renewing it, uh, was something that they used a lot, and I actually found that to be, um, refreshing. Um, it doesn't count the negative connotation when you talk about accelerating learning instead of renewing it. Um, and that some of the ways to do that are the intensive tutoring programs, expanded learning times, um, and then over and over again, just the importance of building relationships and making those connections. It doesn't matter if it's, um, the secretary behind the desk at the school, or their teacher, or the nurse, or, you know, whoever that might be, but the connections and really getting the communication compared. So, um, it was a big conference. I'm, I'm glad I had the opportunity to learn about what was provided, and if you're interested, I have a bunch of information. Anybody want to talk about the topic today?
Well, so everyone needs to do that. That's the issue. Um, they didn't say whether or not it would be done next year, but I did just see on our last email that there is, um, an equity, um... Is there an equity track? I don't know. But there is in your, I got it in my email today, so there is something in there to take that through, not that.
Yes.
I'm glad to talk about mental health, because that's something we definitely do to look into. Being closed for a year, you know, let's, let's get the mind right, because the mind's not right, it's stupid. So we need to get it running, let's, let's get down to the ground floor, let's control all of it. Right, it's, it's, the mind is right. So that's, I'm glad to help.
I think there's a lot of things, you know, that's just very compelling over here, that even just looking at some of the links that they had provided back and back, and trauma in the kids and, and what Kathy, because she brings this up all the time, because they're traumatized. Um, they were traumatized for COVID, but some kids, some kids traumatized, you know, having their sense, but, you know, so, thank you.
Thank you for watching, and also, Chris, for getting the time.
And questions on this? So we're moving right on to the super junior before.
Well, I couldn't have asked for a better frame or setup, because what you just discussed is exactly what our leadership team has been focused on for the last few days. Uh, and it's really that idea around developing agency in the system, that collective and individual ownership, of how we recognize the needs for each child in the system and do everything we can to provide the supports, whether it's social, emotional, academic, behavioral. Uh, yeah, we just wrapped up an amazing two days. So we're leaning into that conversation through the lens of innovation, and that's just one of the graphics we came up with to get that idea moving forward about the collective we, so it's each school and a district and all of us, focus on the systems, routines, uh, the pieces that we can control that will actually make a difference in the life of each of our children. So it was an amazing two days. This is the word that will launch to start the year, and we're inviting a guest speaker to help us think through that lens. Uh, we have provided you tonight with a copy of this book, Innovator's Mindset, and it's really all about that idea of empowering learners in our system and creating agency and ownership of the learning process. Uh, and that gets us thinking through the lens of creativity, having voice, being empowered, and actually doing something with the learning to create, invent, and model new ideas. So our kickoff will be focused thinking about the lens of equity through the idea of innovation, of what can we control as a system, and how do we move forward to personalize learning, build those relationships, and ensure every student, every day feels like they're heard, valued, and that learning is producing a different outcome. Uh, moving forward, looking through that lens, we unpack that through a lot of different systemic lenses. And we ask ourselves, are those things that are actually advancing our work around equity, ensuring every child has opportunities and ability to achieve, or are they hindering our ability? And so we look through grading practices, through the lens of bias. We look through intervention systems and wrestle with what do we have today and what do we need to ensure that every student gets what they need in a timely basis, in terms of what you were talking about, about whether it's tutoring or expanded learning or even deeper touch basis. So we're looking through the lens of intervention and support, discipline, attendance. We know that was a challenge during remote learning, and we don't want to have that same disengagement. We want to recapture and reengage professional learning communities. What is the role of adult learning through the lens of that commitment to each child? Uh, we look through the lens of our T prep process, which, if you boil it all down, really was never created around evaluation. It was created around how we ensure equitable learning. That was the whole foundation of the cell learning. So we looked and unpacked through that lens, as well as through that lens of guaranteed viable curriculum. What is it that we want students to walk away from knowing, believing? How will that produce that life readiness, that career readiness that we're after? So it's an amazing two days, and really the main focus is around that equity lens as it pertains to learning. We know that's one of your main, major focuses, uh, as a board of directors, is how we advance learning, and really, we believe it's through that each child lens. What does each of those kids need to be successful, and how do we know that and provide it in a timely way? Uh, that comes down to the commitment about every student, every day. We've just kind of been saying that. That is our biggest celebration, returning to the school year. After seventeen months of not having all of those kids, we know what that does to hindering our ability to ensure success, and we are super excited to get them all back. So, uh, that'll be September first, first day of school, and I'll share some key dates for you. So we are opening our offices. One of the things we know is we've lost a couple hundred families from where we started the year to where we ended. We don't know where they're at, or are they coming back, and we want to be ready to meet their needs. So we're getting our offices open early. We sent communication to all the families enrolled and that have, uh, unengrolled or disappeared last year, trying to get that communication to get it back in. We're going to start our training next week to ensure our new teachers have that proper orientation, they're welcome, they're onboarded. And the very next week, we're right back with all of our staff, focusing on our building days on the, uh, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. We would love to invite any of you board that would like to join us on our kickoff celebration. We'll have George here the morning of the twenty-sixth, that Thursday, and he'll have our keynote just to help us think about that idea of innovation through the lens of personalizing learning, building relationships, taking risks. And then he'll be in our schools for the whole rest of the day, helping us and our staff to deeper unpack, what does that look like and sound like, and how do we really launch with that lens of what you're discussing, of personalizing learning for each child? Our first day of school will be coming online. We do have an orientation to help our students, because as you know, some of them haven't been to full day for a while, and, uh, so we'll have sixth and ninth grade orientation at those key transition points, followed by the first day of school in the first, and then kindergarten, starting on this stuff. We had, and you mentioned this, and I won't really touch on it for a very long period of time, but our CPAC committee opened eyes to what our present reality, and it was both a success and a challenge. The success is, they saw through the lens of our staff, what our challenges and our needs are, and the, I think the other piece of the success is they saw a profound appreciation for how our staff are wrestling with what we have today, with where our needs are. They saw challenges as well in terms of our elementarys today are overcrowded. And at our next meeting, which will be coming up, uh, here in a couple weeks, on the twenty-fourth at Tarmagin Ranch, we'll still do the tour aspect, but we'll take a little bit deeper look at our enrollment projections. We have accurate numbers now from our developers, so we can really forecast on a conservative and aggressive estimate, where are we going to be in five to ten years? And that will help our committee inform our reputation to you as a board of where do we go from here? So, uh, we received positive comments, and they're still coming in. Uh, safety and health is definitely a challenge, and I'll remind you of a piece of communication that I know you saw via email, but we haven't read publicly, about our ability to control mask mandates and things of that nature. Uh, as a reminder, we do get our guidance from a few different sources, the Washington State Department of Health, OSPI, and for the labor side, for the employee side, Washington State Department of Labor and Industries. So those are the three decent guidance and agencies that direct us and inform where we need to go. And some of that guidance sometimes is recommendations, and some of the times the recommendations are requirements and mandates. And so our job is to help our community, you all know where to sit, uh, and make sure we get that out. So I do have a packet, uh, which will go out Monday, uh, included for you, just what that current revised status looks like. And as you know, from the last seventeen months, a revision may not stay a revision very long, because all things change, and they change sometimes frequently. Uh, right now, indoor masking is a mandate. And I'll explain a little bit more about that. And the mandate is for adults that are vaccinated, uh, in the presence of students and nonstudents to have a face covering on. When the adult that's vaccinated is not in the presence of students, they are allowed to take a face covering off. That's why we're presumed that we're all vaccinated, so we don't have face coverings today. Um, unvaccinated staff are, through that guidance, expected to wear face coverings in the presence of others, including other staff. So that's where the guidance sits today. Uh, the guidance is probably likely to shift. You've seen Snohomish and other counties move to mandatory indoor mask orders. Pierce County, in a Zoom meeting today, I believe is heading in that direction. So that might change whether students are present or not. If that comes online, then we would be expecting all of our face coverings, which will change our next meeting and certainly our working environment. Vaccinations have moved forward from, uh, to the mandatory state for state employees under penalty of losing your job. Our school employees were not part of that directive that the governor provided, except we received guidance today that those employees involved in healthcare, which would include our healthroom professionals, speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists. What we learned today is if you are licensed from the Department of Health, you must have a vaccination as part of that governor's order. So we're beginning that communication with staff about that this is a compelled reality. We don't see, based on, uh, OSPI's guidance and from the governor, that extending to students or school staff yet, but other states have done that for school employees as well. So that's unknown at this point in time. Uh, we do have all the mitigation strategies, but the number one priority this year that we see in the guidance is schools staying in-person, full-time as a mandatory expectation. And that was backed both by the governor of OSPI and the Department of Health. So there's nothing in the forecast that would tell us we might be to a closure or even a part-time. Uh, everything in the guidance says that the mitigation strategies are in service and support of returning to full-time, but not at the expense of. So in other words, social distancing, you do the best you can, but our number one priority is keeping kids in school all day, every day, which is also our biggest, of course, celebration. Uh, and then looking at athletic activity guidance, that just came out yesterday. Chris worked very hard to get that included, and so that will come out on Monday. Uh, but we do receive questions, as you know, and some of those came tonight, about what is the board's authority to not follow a mandate, and what might happen if we chose to do that? So I'll read, and I know you've seen this in your email, but I'll read it directly just for your reminder and the information. So this came out from Superintendent Ray Doll, end of July, after our last meeting, and to some of the bullets are read as such. "The ongoing mask order continues to apply to public schools, charter schools, private schools, and tribal compact schools. Under the authority of RCW forty-three point zero six point two two zero, the governor has broad emergency powers and they have the power of law. As state superintendent, I have the responsibility to carry out the law, and I intend to do so regardless of how I might personally feel about masks or any other requirement placed upon the system at this time. By constitutional authority and RCW twenty-eight A three hundred zero four zero, one of the state superintendent's clear powers is, quote, 'supervision over all matters pertaining to the public schools of the state,' end quote. Apportionment amounts and timing are shaped by additional law, but let me be clear, boards or districts that intentionally disobey, dismiss, or shun an explicit law, including a governor's executive order, which has the power of law, will see an immediate halt to their basic education apportionment and their federal funds that come through OSPI." And it goes on to state, "Any district that does not offer full-time, in-person learning experience for each and every family and student that seeks it will be considered in violation of basic education rights of families and will also have their apportionment and federal funds immediately halted. These critical public health actions, including masking for now, are not at the discretion of local boards and local superintendents." So that is the message from OSPI with regard to our mandate, and you can see very clearly the, the directive that if we don't follow mandates, our apportionment, which is our funding and what we just approved to receive, will halt immediately. Uh, also, we consulted with our insurer, the Washington Schools Risk Management Pool, to find out about insurance, uh, per your directive, and you're asked to look at that. Uh, based on their executive director's feedback, it is a system establish what's called is deliberate indifference. So we have taken the position that we will not follow mandates, we are subject to the potential of losing our insurance coverage and/or being held personally liable. So that's the information that we received both from OSPI and from Risk Management Pool with regard to following mandates. What we have discussed is a system of leaders, uh, to make sure we're calibrated as a system, and you're not surprised, is that our job is to communicate and follow the guidance as it comes to mandates, that we would not supersede guidance without conversation with you all, to make sure you were in the loop. So we have done a lot of interpreting and revising over the last twenty-four to twenty-eight hours, and that's the Chris Willis part of weed, by the way, who's a working machine. Uh, and that will be coming public out on Monday, just so we can get those updates. I will say there's some celebrations to this that we didn't see last year. So there are greater relaxations of social distancing for kids, and what constitutes close contacts for children, which will result in more in-person instructional time. There are some also other opportunities through testing to get athletes and students back in school earlier. So there is a recognition of the harm and emotional trauma of that closure, and a recognition that as the Department of Health, under their mandates and requirements of us, that they are taking a position that we need to get kids back in school every day the best that we can as well, uh, while keeping them safe. So that's what we see through the guidance and through the language, and I hope that just provides a little context of where that sits.
And certainly updates on, on social distancing, and I know... And I know we were at six feet and then we were at three feet. And has there been any adjustment to that? It creates so much operational disruption in our classrooms that I'm curious.
There, that's part of the strategies for mitigation. So vaccinations, face covering, social distancing, hand washing, HVAC with higher levels of filtration. All of those pieces play a role in mitigation strategy. And the guidance is around three feet as the minimum standard, as best we can. So not at the expense of displacing kids or not having school, but three feet is best we can. Similar with face coverings at lunch, do the best we can. We know that, for instance, the high school has 400 students at a time with lunch and you'd have to spread over the whole entirety of the campus. So we're trying to figure out what that looks like to do the best we can. But yes, so there is still guidance around six feet for adults, three feet for children as best we can. What hasn't gone back to the guidance from last year is outdoors, masks are not required. So that gives us greater flexibility at times where we're doing PE outdoors or recess or things of that nature. So our communication to staff at this point is that when we're outdoors, we can be mask-free. When we move indoors, we have to fight order and directive mask backup. That was different last year as well. So there is some relaxation that will help us in the environment this year returning. We asked about when might we see vaccine eligibility, how long might face coverings last? And this isn't official by any means, I'm just repeating what I heard, please don't hold me to it. But they were kind of talking about approval for national vaccine for under 12, maybe earlier October with rollout that might happen into the holidays. So I would envision this probably honestly to last for the first several months of in going into the school year. And then we'll just have to see where things go. But that's as best as I can probably update you today from what we've seen.
I did get the feeling from looking at the mandates and the emphasis on getting the kids back at school that a lot of the mandates are to help us keep the kids back at school. Just before I came here, I read about a, just a county in Florida that did that for two days. And 400 to 40 students and staff were deported. I, I know things are difficult, but we're trying to keep the kids back.
A few celebrations just to share and thank you for making some of those notes earlier today. That is just wonderful of staff to hear and appreciate what you think and see and feel. So thank you for that. We do have a school supply event where we will be partnering. Director Lee will be out in the community this Saturday, helping to get school supplies and to the hands of folks that might need them. So that'll be coming up, that's been posted out. Touch a Truck, I couldn't not put this picture out there. If that just doesn't touch your heart, I don't know what does. We have an amazing partnership with the city. As you know, we continue to express a desire to build that relationship and collaboration with our city and community stakeholders. And it was just wonderful to see Chris and Megan were out there helping kiddos and families onto our forklifts and our buses. And I think we have some future customers that will be hopefully excited on the first day of school to get on the old fleet. And then, as you know, we try to spread the love, if you will. We put out a little note on Facebook thanking our facility staff. When it's hot, when it's muggy, all summer long, they're out there working with our roofers and cleaning floors and getting our facilities ready to go, repainting, repairing air conditioning, HVAC, maintenance filters, all that stuff. So we put a little note out, but that's a continued focus based on your expectation around community celebration and collaboration. And we'll continue to reach out and put out positive messages so people can know what we do. And that goes a long way. I've talked to two custodians last night that happen to work here and they just felt appreciated and valued and that goes a long way. So thank you for that, that guidance and that expectation, it's really going along right. That concludes my report.
Just so obvious, the CFAC made you all heartache. It's the ground for words, you make the choice, you're good.
The next thing we're going to is reports. First thing is, on our report, it's your report by, right? Yeah, there you go. For report by, I mean, if you have any questions for her, she's right there. Hope we let that sort you?
Oh, about financial reports?
Financial reports, no, you can't.
No, okay, I'm sorry, we missed what you were.
We're in financial reports.
Okay, yes, we're following along.
Sorry, I didn't know if we were allowed to ask questions at all, but.
On what, the financial report?
No, just what we were talking about before.
No. Sorry. Any questions? A little more on the next, the next one?
So just, that's a brief report about our initial work around drug and alcohol, community partnerships in that endeavor. Well, much more to report over the course of the year as things get going. But that's your initial report of how we've taken that grant funding, established those partnerships and then envision bringing that support into our schools for our kids, so.
So just to make sure I'm clear on this graphic, so you're one funding and you're two funding the $9,000 and $30,000 grant funding with the RITA district now?
Correct, which will help to go for staffing to support that initiative.
Right.
Any other question?
Just, so the community coalition will be beyond their involvement in the truancy board. It will be a further, that's great, that's great, whatever we're getting to.
Union has also reported on the strength, isolation, what, Chris, you might do? He's got me in my seat.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm always looking for trends and patterns and it's supposed to be messed up for here.
Although the data reflects long periods of closure and or partial learning and we see a major correlation in reduction of restraint and isolation, which we would expect in the context.
Absolutely.
Any questions? If we move on to the present agenda, I don't want to do five. Any questions? Does it actually matter?